Welcome back to the Select Committee on Victoria Planning Provision Amendments, VC 257, 267 and 274. For the purposes of the witnesses, could I just draw to your attention that all evidence taken is protected by parliamentary privilege as provided by the Constitution Act of 1975 and provisions of the Legislative Council Standing Orders. Therefore, the information you provide during the hearing is protected by law. You are protected against any action for what you may say during this hearing, but if you go elsewhere and repeat the same things, those comments may not be protected by this privilege. Any deliberately false or misleading information to the committee may be considered a contempt of its parliament. All evidence is being recorded. You will be provided with a proof version of the transcript following the hearing. Transcripts will ultimately be made public and posted on the committee's website. For the Hansard Record, can you please state your name and the organisation you are appearing on behalf of?
Good morning. I'm Cat Panjari. I'm the Director of Strategic Foresight and Partnerships from the Municipal Association of Victoria.
And I am James McLean, Planning and Sustainable Development Lead at the Municipal Association of Victoria.
Thank you. Welcome, and we appreciate you appearing before the committee on, I know, relatively short notice. So, thank you very much. Please, I believe you've got a presentation you'd like to make.
We do. Thank you, Chair. So, thank you to the committee for inviting the Municipal Association of Victoria to present to the Select Committee. I'd like to respectfully acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we meet today, the Wurundjeri Warrung people. I respect their deep connection to this land and pay my respects to their elders, and I would also like to acknowledge any First Nations people here today. The MAV is the legislated peak body for local government in Victoria. We were formed in 1879 with the Municipal Association Act of 1907 officially recognising the MAV as the voice of local government in Victoria. And I really need to provide the context for our submission in that no-one understands the challenges and opportunities facing Victorians better than local councils at the moment, from the rapidly evolving technologies in place to the social changes that we're experiencing, to cost of living challenges, shifting economies, environmental pressures, a lack of key worker housing, particularly in our rural regions, increasing rates of homelessness, and a lack of developers in rural Victoria to provide housing. Our local communities and the local governments that represent them are at the forefront of multiple challenges and transformations happening simultaneously. So, the housing and environmental challenges facing Victoria are formidable and demand transformative changes in land use and development. But that transformative change will only be possible if the planning system achieves a social licence in these communities across metropolitan Melbourne, across our towns and regional cities, and across rural Victoria. Councils are the primary employers of planners in Victoria. Nearly half of all planners at the last census were employed in local governments across Victoria, and it will mostly fall on local planners to implement the controls that are subject of this Select Committee. So, we want them to work well. The MAV has closely followed the development of amendments VC 257, VC 267 and VC 274 and their effects on the planning system, councils and our local communities. Before we respond to your questions and the terms of reference, we wish to place our responses in context. Government policies should be assessed by their effects, not by their stated, only by their stated objectives or the goodwill that's created by them. You've asked us to critique the planning provisions introduced by the three amendments, and we've done so. But the criticism of the provisions and their likely effects should not be construed as opposition to the amendments' stated objectives. The MAV supports the stated objectives of the three amendments which are listed on our first slide. We know that we need to support housing growth, boost housing construction, and support housing and economic growth in the precincts across our regions. We agree with the overarching settlement strategy of the government set out in a plan for Victoria, which is to build 70% of new homes in established urban areas. This strategy has not been in play, been in place since Plan Melbourne, or it has been in place, rather, but it hasn't been achieved, so we understand the imperative to try new approaches. It is because of our support for these objectives that we want to make sure that the planning provisions work well. There are any number of ways to achieve the objectives, and we want to make sure that the options chosen are administratively efficient and don't create unintended consequences. You've heard from others about the nature of VC 257 and VC 274. While they create the head provisions for new zones and overlay, they don't apply them to land. So, while we've put plenty in our paper and our submission about those two amendments, we'll concentrate on VC 267 during these opening statements because VC 267 applies to land already zoned for residential use, and we can already anticipate the unintended consequences. And I'd like to talk you through those now. Again, we support the stated objective to boost housing construction to meet the housing needs of Victorians, but there are many ways the new townhouse and low-rise code could have been drafted to produce denser housing without creating these unintended consequences. We think there are eight unintended consequences. I'm sure there are others, but we'd like to step through these. So, first, we think the code will actually incentivise the excessive removal of existing vegetation. The omission of a standalone landscaping objective and standard and a tree canopy standard that does not adequately discourage the removal of the existing trees will cause excessive vegetation loss. We use the example of Nilumbik Shire in our submission. Many developable sites in Nilumbik enjoy canopy cover of over 40%, but the local policy encourages retention of mature and significant trees. The new code switches off that local policy and only requires 10 or 20% canopy cover, achieved through a combination of existing and new trees. While some tree loss is to be expected when you develop a site, it need not be more excessive than is necessary. We think this unintended consequence will actually make it very difficult for the plan for Victoria to achieve its target of 30% canopy cover across metropolitan Melbourne. Secondly, we think that the code will produce materially lower environmental sustainable development standards in 28 local government areas because it switches off the local policies that they already have in place around ESD standards. This will lead to poorer outcomes, including in relation to passive design, the siting and solar orientation of buildings. This is not the sort of thing I need to make very clear that can be left to a building code. It's too late to be left to a building code. It needs to be part of a planning code. Ultimately, new homes that are not sufficiently energy efficient are also not sufficiently affordable. So, these sustainable development, design questions are important because they affect the cost of living. The 27 local government areas plus the city of Melbourne, which have stronger ESD local policies, account for 66% of Victoria's population and 63% of Victoria's planning activity. So, we're not talking about an anomaly here. The code applies lower ESD standards across two-thirds of the state. Third, there's a mismatch between the planning and the building rules in relation to ground floor levels that will create confusion, especially for ground floor level in flood-prone areas. We explain why in our written submission, and we're happy to take questions on this. Fourth, the code means potentially contaminated land can't be considered during the planning stage. The onus is placed on the landowner only, and the risk is that if a landowner holds a planning permit, they may think that they have satisfied their general environmental duty when they have not. The fifth issue that we draw to your attention is that speculative appeal rights will create inefficiency in councils and erode trust among third parties. Clause 55 creates confusion as to how to provide notice to potential objectors and then how to provide updated notice to actual objectors, depending on whether or not the decision will be able to proceed, unable to be appealed. How and when this notice and advice is to be issued is unclear because third-party appeal rights arise only when it can be established that an application is fully deemed not to comply. That status might only be discerned late into the, into the application process and assessment process. The sixth point is that because so much hinges on determining in black and white terms whether each and every numerical standard has been complied with, that will be the new locus for dispute. So, there is going to be a significant call on the tribunal to make orders about whether standards have been met. The seventh point is that many existing planning schemes, local planning scheme amendments, will be void. Local code makes local policies and some elements of local schedules to residential zones irrelevant, and all of those local planning scheme amendments that have been developed with the intention of applying in one way or another to residentially zoned land are now effectively void or undermined because the research and modelling underpinning the amendments has lost its relevance. The waste of council and local government resources here in a very constrained financial and human resources environment is significant, and it must be acknowledged that all those amendments had been expressly authorised for exhibition by the planning minister and the department under delegation. The final issue relates to the nature of a deemed-to-comply approach, which will require that we will all need to tolerate a lower quality of design generally. This is the purpose of a deemed-to-comply framework. So, while these amendments are highly technical, it's worth noting that each of these eight unintended consequences come about for only two reasons. The first reason is that the code applies standard built-form outcomes to all residential zone land in the state. That means everything from a township zone in a small rural town without so much as a V-line bus service, all the way up to the new housing choice and transport zone in the catchment of, or activity centres with generous public transport options. The code has been designed really with the missing middle of Melbourne in mind, but because it's a one-size-fits-all, the risks are under development in those activity centres, in the housing choice and transport zone, and development that is insufficiently supported by infrastructure in rural townships. The second reason is the extent of exemptions in clause 55. We think that switching off clause 65, which is the usual requirement on the decision-maker to make a well-rounded decision that considers a range of matters, is a bridge too far. It might be appropriate for simple matters, but given the code needs to work in all residential zones in all part of Victoria, there will be times when the decision-maker should be able to draw on considerations that fall outside of the numerical standards in the deemed-to-comply framework. Now, it's really important for me, as the peak body for local government here in Victoria, to let you know that this isn't about obstruction. It's about ensuring that matters that pose risk to human safety and the environment are considered and dealt with at the planning stage. That's what planning is for. Finally, thank you, James. We're going to move on to what we think is a better way. Finally, our written submission closes with two recommendations about how we can do planning reform better in this state. These aren't a panacea, but they do seek to address some of the reasons why these three VPP amendments haven't managed to achieve the state-plus-local industry and community support that one might hope for for system changes of this magnitude. We understand the desire from government to make reforms as quickly as possible and to implement the commitments in the housing statement with minimal delay. We understand that. But there is a cost to developing the planning controls entirely within state departments and not adequately testing them with the users of the planning system, especially those that will have to actually implement them, like local government planners. Had those processes to develop the controls been more collaborative and had more of a co-design approach where we have a shared understanding about the strategy for how to write these controls, we could have worked that out together, and I'm sure we would have ended up with a better result. I want to be clear at this point that this isn't only about the local administrative efficiency of the system. Ultimately, proposals about how we do densification well will succeed if custodians of the planning system in both state and local government are joined up, and if that journey of change is transparent and something that communities can understand and engage in. That's how the planning system can generate social licence across all of those communities in Victoria to achieve the transformational change that will be needed for Victoria to meet its housing challenges. So, we have two recommendations to end on that we encourage the committee to consider. The background is that, to the first one, is that the Victorian Auditor General, Victorian Auditor General audited the Victorian planning system in 2009 and 2017 and made very strong recommendations about how the system had become inefficient. In both those cases, the Auditor General recommended that a new performance review and improvement mechanism for the VPP be established to improve the collaboration between designers of the planning system in the state government and the primary implementers of planning controls in local government. Neither of these recommendations were taken up by government, but a mechanism like this is needed now more than ever. The mechanism wouldn't curtail the planning minister's powers in any way. What it would do is produce higher-quality proposals about how to review and improve the VPP. The second recommendation is much more straightforward. Local planners learned about the full extent of exemptions in clause 65 on the 6th of March, when the controls were gazetted and came into effect. That new clause 55 and the novel approach to third-party appeal rights all require new templates, new systems, new processes to be implemented immediately. There was insufficient advice, advice about how to do this consistently from state government, so all councils' planning teams, 79 council planning teams across the state, had to create their own workarounds. Council planners needed time to prepare for the changes of this magnitude, so we ask you to agree with us that a reasonable notice period is needed, and in this case, we're calling for at least 60 days.
Terrific.
Thank you. We're happy to take any further questions.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your excellent submission as well, which was most informative. I'm going to kick off the questions. If clause 65 was switched back on, would that make a significant change to the sort of timeframe to deliver projects? I mean, is there a major cost, a time cost imposed associated with clause 65?
I'll take that one, Cat. So, there are a few decision guidelines under clause 65. It's hard to say exactly how much time it would take because every planning application in the state, whether under these codes or what have you, is, is different, but I can't imagine it would be a significant time impost because, as we said, these decision guidelines enable planners to look at things like land contamination, sustainable design, and those sorts of things that ultimately improve the kind of homes and developments that are delivered, and therefore the efficiency will be for, you know, developers making sure that their applications will be able to be built and well-located. So, we say that by empowering planners to go back to the decision guidelines of clause 65 and consider those environmental impacts, those contamination impacts, those hazards, that it actually will increase efficiency in the long run.
So, if there is time, it would be time well spent.
Indeed, indeed. And planners, you know, in, I suppose, in defence of my colleagues in local government planning departments are incredibly well-trained and well-versed in how to apply these decision guidelines appropriately and in, and in the right context. So, I totally trust our colleagues in local government to, to know, yeah, the appropriate application of the decision guidelines as well, depending on the context, because obviously each of these amendments go from an individual lot level for a townhouse development right up to significant development in, in activity centres, so that the weight you give to each decision guideline will be consummate to the impact of the development application before them.
Okay, thank you. Getting a little obscure, there is a reference in your submission to it, however, but I would like you, if you would, to explain to the committee, in the process of consultation, there's, there's a body that was established called the Activity Centre Standing Advisory Committees. Could you perhaps firstly explain to the committee a little bit about what the role and position of that committee was, and then, I guess, how effective was it in its operations?
Can I commence by suggesting that the government need to advise about what the role of those committees were in establishing those? I think we can talk about the experience of councils who participated in those.
Yeah.
Could, could you explain why you say that?
Well, because I think we weren't consulted on setting up those, that committee or, or the terms of reference for that, or what their role is. So, we weren't part of the decision for that. That's why I suggest that government needs to provide that context.
Perhaps provide a little, little feedback for the committee as to what, for this committee as to what it is and what its role was, and then how did it go?
Absolutely. So, these standing advisory committees were established within Planning Panels Victoria for each of the 10 pilot activity centres, and those advisory committees' role was, as we understand, under their terms of reference, was to review the, the draft zoning and, and schedules under those zones and overlays as to their administrative efficiency and whether they get the kind of outcomes sought under the Activity Centre Programme. The role of those committees was to receive referrals from the Activity Centres Programme within the Victoria Planning Authority and the department, so review the, the schedules and overlays developed, as well as take submissions from councils and the members of the public.
Keep going.
Yep. The, the local councils involved, from our understanding, and it was rather limited, and that, as you will have seen in our submission, the officers did their utmost to engage in the standing advisory committee process. Unfortunately, information shared with councils was limited, and, and while councils were able to make submissions to those committees, it was done so with limited information available and limited time made. And I think, from, from my understanding, the, the draft schedules and, and what was referred to the standing advisory committee was only made available to the local councils a couple of days before the changes were actually gazetted into their planning schemes. So, a bit like the townhouse code experience, the councils only found out about what they'll end up being assessing a couple of days before, before it was gazetted into planning schemes. So, the advisory committee process was done very much behind closed doors without much of the involvement of local councils.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mr Davis?
Can I echo the Chair's points about the importance of your submission, the thought that's gone into it, and the actually quality of some of the, the work that's been done? So, I just want to put that on record. And I want to continue again where he was on the standing advisory committees. These seem to, the Planning Panel Victoria bodies, material was put to them in a, perhaps in a, in an incomplete knowledge situation, but the committees did not fully endorse the government's proposals. I, I think that's correct, isn't it?
That was my understanding of part of it. Of course, I don't want to speak on behalf of the advisory committee, though, of course.
But, for example, the catchment zones were not, not sort of ticked in?
My understanding is that limited information was referred to the advisory committees, and I would encourage this committee to review those standing advisory committee reports, to look into the detail of what they were referred. Our submission's talking at a much higher level here as to what those committees were looking at.
But I'm, I'm trying to understand the process here, and so there's an inadequate process. Is that a fair description?
I think we could, we, the reason we make these points in our submission, Deputy Chair, is to indicate that there is a better way.
Yep.
And we could, with better consultation, more timeframes built in for genuine engagement and co-design, we think there's a better way to achieve the intended outcomes.
Yep. Would, would we be in a better position if we accepted some of the recommendations of those panels? Because they seem to be less, I'm just wanting to get these.
I don't know that we can actually comment.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Yeah, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to comment.
That's okay. And GC252, which moves on beyond these three, but actually implements it some of the teeth, if I can put it that way, have you assessed that at all and what that means? And can I ask you what involvement councils had in that process?
I think there's thousands of pages in GC, in that group amendment, so we haven't reviewed in detail those, those amendments. But again, the, my understanding is the suburban rail loop authority has had a lot more time to undertake work in the, in those strategic precincts around the stations as compared to the Activity Centres teams. So, that's to be clear, the SRLA is one thing, and the department.
So, I'm just asking about the Activity Centres.
Oh, sorry. So, the Activity Centres have been, were very time-constrained in the work that they were doing, and so I think in fairness to the department, if they had have had more time, there might have been more time for a conversation.
Were you consulted on those changes?
MAV wasn't because we're not a, a planning authority in those areas.
And, and were the councils in general consulted?
To an extent, but again, it comes down to the, the quality of, of that consultation and, and the various points at which information's shared.
And finally, I want to talk about heritage and some of the issues around heritage with all of these amendments, actually, but, but in the larger centres in particular. The truth is that if you're trying to do proper place-making and you're trying to protect long-established heritage overlays and actually get the outcomes that I think most of us would want, that these changes don't provide those protections.
Again, I would say that referring to our submission, the way codification works is that if you meet the code, you go forth, and that it does switch off those, those local heritage protections along the way.
So, we'll, we'll see.
Thank you, Mr Davis. Mr Batchelor?
Thanks very much, Chair, and thanks to the witnesses for appearing today. This committee's been tasked with investigating some pretty significant and complicated planning matters, largely in the lead-up to a revocation motion that seeks to disallow their introduction into the planning scheme, particularly in relation to 257 and 267. I just want to be really clear from, as Mr Davis does say, it's a very comprehensive and well-thought-through submission. My reading is that in relation to the housing choice and transport zone, the position in the submission is that those amendments do meet the objectives of planning in Victoria. Is that a fair read of your submission?
Yes.
They have the potential to produce good outcomes. It is also, however, important to note, it's, the devil is in the detail, and it's about how those local schedules are written.
Absolutely.
And we think we can contribute to shaping those in a way that they'll be implemented appropriately.
I just want to be really clear, because this inquiry has been given a pretty clear terms of reference. Do these changes meet these objectives in relation to that?
And as we've said, we've stated they, we think they do.
You obviously, and you also say that, that combined, the HCTZ and the BFO have the capacity to contribute to meeting Victoria's housing needs. Do you think it would be fair to say that wholesale revocation of these two additions to the Victorian planning provisions would add complexity and uncertainty to the way that planning is operating in this state?
Look, we know that the sector across the board, from an applicant to the local government planners that are administering the system, need certainty. So, anything that provides clarity and certainty is fundamental to improving efficiency and administration of the system. So, we're not suggesting in the submission that they are revoked. We think they will meet, to a certain extent, the intended outcomes. We think 267 is more difficult because some parts of that.
Yep. I just want to come to 267 in a sec.
And do, oh, sorry.
Yeah, don't worry.
Do you mind if I, something we, we should highlight with the Activity Centres Programme, and something that I think many of our colleagues in local government are following after us this afternoon, they will talk to that a lot of local council work was seen in, in the final Activity Centre and suburban rail loop station areas. So, the councils were already, had already done a lot of strategic planning work, a lot of work with their local communities, businesses, done the infrastructure planning in those precincts.
Some of this work picked up on that.
So, some of this work picked up on that, and so the councils were already trying to give certainty and, and direction and assist communities in the understanding change in, in the Activity Centres already, what that means for the local development industry and the local businesses in those areas. So, what ended up happening is, in the intervening period, was that uncertainty was then added when this Activity Centres Programme was announced. So, the, the layers here have added some uncertainty, but on balance, the, the MAV sees that the programme at a principles level can meet the objectives of planning in Victoria.
Obviously, you've raised some issues with some, some of the elements. From a sort of implementation going forward, creating certainty, a process of iterative improvement to this as a baseline, do you think that would be welcome? Do you think that would be achievable in terms of meeting the, both the objectives of providing more housing, but also... but also in the sort of further process of improvement?
Well, as we've suggested, we do think that there needs to be constant review and change and a formal process to review how the provisions are working and to improve that as we go along and continue to provide the level of certainty that's required to the planning sector. We would not be in this situation, however, if we had a proper co-design process to begin with. But yes, we think that there should be an established continuous review.
Thanks, Chair.
Truly. Thank you. Dr. Medfield?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you again for the submission. It was excellent. And I think quite, in quite detail, got into each of the amendments they're actually considering in this inquiry. I guess just to follow on from Mr. Bachelor, what we've heard from government representatives, from different people who've appeared before the panel is, things are so bad, we just need to try something. Let's get it out there, see what happens, and we can fix it later. What would you say to that sort of approach, particularly with respect to 267, which I think is the one that has caused the most concern?
I'll commence and ask James to finish off or follow up. But planning is a long-held discipline. There are really important principles in the planning system to protect humans and, you know, the way we interact with our land uses across the state. So we need good planning to be in place. We can iterate and improve and always, based on what's happening in our societies and our changing communities. But we need the experts to guide that change. And it needs to happen in a systematic way. And we need communities to be brought along with that and that social licence to be able to move to a new way of living in higher denser communities. So this gazetteal and then implementation of a new provision is just not the way we recommend a planning system operation in this state. And James, you might be wanting to add to that further.
This question actually took me back to university, where I had a lecturer, once you make a decision and it gets built with planning, it's incredibly hard to undo. And that's the reason why we have planning, we have it as a profession, to make sure that the right outcomes and that good planning outcomes are made in the first instance. And that's why in our submission and work we've done on what we'd like to see in terms of legislative change calls for a better process to make sure that those designing the system are working well with those administering the system, to make sure that we don't end up living with long-term outcomes that are undesirable for communities and therefore undoing the social licence of the need to build more housing in our housing crisis. And I think there's a good, decent, long history of us doing this in Victoria. For example, thinking, you know, back 10 years ago with apartment design standards, a problem was identified where, you know, high-density development, bedrooms without windows, poor ventilation.
Dog boxes.
Dog boxes, if you want to use that term. And, you know, the Victorian Government, and I know local councils actually begun the process. It was the City of Moreland, now Mary Beck, here in Victoria, who developed apartment design standards for their local areas. And that work was picked up by the state and rolled out statewide. So there is examples of where mistakes have been made in the past and we've sought to correct. What we're saying is if you talk to local government a lot earlier, who are on the ground every day, making decisions, seeing where the issues arise in the first instance. In my time as a local government planner, you literally have the community, a bit like today, you have the community on the other side of you at the counter, asking questions, identifying problems, you experience it first. And ideally, we'd have a better way of feeding that back up to our colleagues in the state government. Our submission's about avoiding those unintended consequences in the first instance.
And do you have confidence that the systems that we currently have in place will be able to do that? Iterative improvement and identification of, you know, some of these unintended consequences if they come to bear, particularly for 267? Do you feel that, you know, these assurances that we're getting that, oh, we'll fix it if we find that there are problems? Do you feel that that will occur, given the current structures and systems we have in place?
Again, I think that needs to be improved. And we would love to work out with government and co-design what that looks like, what that process looks like to make those changes, what those gate and holding points are, so that we can have a formalized system, so that the sector has the certainty and the development sector has the certainty and planners and communities have certainty. So we would welcome the opportunity to make those changes with government.
Okay. Ms. Crozier.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you both for your very considered evidence and your submission. Incredibly helpful. Can I go back to some of the comments that you made? And I'm looking at your submission, paragraph 36, around that deemed-to-comply standards. And you speak about there's no precedent in Victoria for enabling deemed-to-comply frameworks for high-density development at the scale as anticipated. And I think in your evidence to us, you said something to the words of effect of that it'll risk tolerating lower quality. Can you explain to the committee what that means or looks like?
Yeah, so what we're saying here is that this is a novel approach, a new way of doing planning decision-making in Victoria. The system up until quite recently was very much a performance-based system. So where if you could show that you meet those clause 65 objectives and that you meet the standards, so those measurable standards, whether that's in the townhouse codes or the low-rise code or the apartment design codes, then you'd have a pathway towards approval. And those performance-based standards enabled local council planners to work with the local development sector, whether that's from mum and dads doing a townhouse out the back to large-scale transformative projects to get better outcomes. When you move to a deemed-to-comply, tick the box if you meet this standard and this standard, meet this setback in height, then what you end up doing is you remove that performance-based criteria around negotiation and mediation, seeking, you know, a net community benefit, we say in planning. And you just go to, if you meet these tick-the-box standards, then away you go. And if those standards aren't well-drafted, well-considered.
There is a risk then.
Then there's a risk for low-quality design.
So, and as you said, you've got to bring communities with you. Now, having that risk, having that concept, I think, is quite terrifying. And I paraphrase Professor Buxton, who I think said something along the words of, "These amendments will, you know, tear down a city to rebuild a new city." Is that what potentially could occur if you have that sort of risk deemed-to-comply with these specific designs?
I don't think we want to enter into the hyperbole of it. However, I will say that by removing a performance-based assessment and relying on a numerical standard, there will be a large number of developers that will design only to those numerical standards.
Yep.
And the planner will be powerless to encourage or negotiate a higher level of design. So you may end up with a lowest common denominator of standards that can't be raised.
So the cookie cutter concept, yeah.
And if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Crozier, I, and that's why in our submission, we call for reinstating those clause 65 decision guidelines, because that will empower local government planners to negotiate some better outcomes on the ground.
Thank you, thank you. And just in the last 30 seconds or so, can I ask about amenity? And as you say, you know, local government is responsible for providing services to the community and having local amenity. And I'm particularly interested in, you know, healthcare services, but early childhood, education facilities. What advice did government, or what advice did you provide back to government about the responsibility for local government to, that this would fall to them to provide?
I think it's fair to say, and it's documented in the submissions that the MAV has made to inform the plan for Victoria. We had two submissions for that process. We responded to the housing statement in a submission, and we've made this submission. And that is that we want to build homes and houses, but we also want to build communities. And so at every opportunity, we have talked about the social and community infrastructure that needs to go around these homes, within these Activity Centers, within the densified middle ring of our suburbs, to ensure that we are creating the type of livable communities that people deserve. So we've talked about the need for more open space. And we've talked about the fact that the mechanisms to deliver that community infrastructure cannot be on the burden of local governments to do that, particularly in a rate-capped context. They do not have the capacity to provide all of that infrastructure. And there needs to be a better model, which we know is another commitment of government to look at the infrastructure contributions model. And we're very interested in informing that process as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Watt?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And can I just take a moment to thank you for what is a very considered and detailed submission? And please pass on my thanks to the team for putting that together. And thank you to you both for being here. I wanted to go particularly to VC267 and townhouses. And just wanted to understand from the perspective of your organisations, were there any issues with the way that the RES Code operated prior to the changes with respect to townhouse and low-rise code? Was there any reflections from your members and organisations about challenges with that beforehand?
I think, so the previous RES Code had been around for quite a while. I have to get back to you on those, when that exactly was implemented. I can't think of the top of my head, probably before I was a planner. Been around a long time. And of course, the context of our towns and cities and society changes over time. So I think local councils were always interested in maybe another way of doing RES Code to reflect, you know, the changing scope of how we do planning. And I'd like to draw the attention of this committee to, for example, the work of the Casby Group of Councils, which is the Council Alliance for Sustainable Built Environment. They're all speeded by the MAV. And they'd actually done a lot of work in that space around the environmentally sustainable design standards, which have been switched off under the code. Those standards actually applied a lot to RES Code assessments. Under the old RES Code, you were required to consider local policy. And for those 26 councils and 27, including City of Melbourne, they were undertaking those assessments against the ESD policy. MAV and Casby had been advocating for more of a statewide application of that. So from the local government perspective, we were looking at lifting the sustainable design requirements of residential construction in Victoria, but also applying it more broadly as well to commercial and industrial development as well. But I understand we're talking about housing today. Yeah.
So we did recognise that that needed to be improved. We're not suggesting you go back to the status quo by any means.
I'm just interested in what the reflections were on some of the areas for improvement.
Yeah, and we were, as you say, working towards a pathway of bringing those in with government. And we would welcome that improvement to continue, yeah.
And one thing, in my own, you know, professional reflection on elevating environmentally sustainable design in development is that when you are increasing those standards, you actually do get a better outcome of design and dwelling. You get cheaper living for those inside, you know, dwelling in those sorts of apartments. I myself live in a development, I think it's a 7.5-star rated apartment. It's cheaper to heat and cool, all of those sorts of things. So when you are elevating environmentally sustainable design, you are also elevating the overall design and built form quality of homes.
Look, I appreciate that. And I understand that for some small-scale developments, such as those that are being received through the townhouse code, do you think that will actually lead to some time savings from, in terms of getting it to development and getting people moved into their homes through the planning process?
I think, as you've, James, suggested earlier, by investing in that time early on, you will save time later. So the time is not spent in elevating ESD principles. It's a well-known path to achieve that in dwellings. That's not where the time is spent. So I think it's time invested well in a process. It's much harder to do that in retrofit later, as you heard earlier.
And as I think we sort of go into a bit of detail in our submission, we talk about which parts you can go to the building system and which parts should remain in planning. We see that as some efficiency improvements in the code that need to be explored some more. We also understand that, you know, the, the, apologies. Getting back to those questions around clause 65 and those decision guidelines. Again, our colleagues in local government planning departments are well-trained to express their discretion on how things should go.
That's all for my time.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Bacall?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for your fabulous submission. Now, this whole revolution in planning that we're examining here is predicated on this so-called housing crisis, which, as we've heard evidence, is of the government's own making in two areas. In the demand side, where we've had uncontrolled immigration, and on the supply side, where we've had costs incurred in the whole development and building process by government. In other words, the 15 taxes at least on a developer, the other regulations that are imposed, the cost of building, the cost of materials. And we've got in councils many developments that have been approved that are not going to market because of the cost. And local government seems to me to have been given a very bad rap and quite inappropriately because the allegation is that local government is not approving developments at a rate that we need to have them approve it. Yet we know that in many councils, the developments have been approved, but the product is not going to market. And at the same time, you've indicated that you've basically not been consulted. The peak body of 79 councils in Victoria has not had a say in this whole process. Councils given two days' notice before gazetting, having to create their own workaround scheme to implement activities, communities being locked out of the decision-making process. Would you say this is a total disaster of a program to implement change in the planning and housing environment?
There is a better way to bring about the intended outcomes. I think we've made that very clear. And as you will have heard right throughout this committee process, this is a problem that has been brewing for decades. And now is the time for us to have all three levels of government working together to solve this current issue. And it's imperative on us to try to find a cut through. And local government stands ready to be part of that solution.
You also said that certainty is critical in development and planning. And this supposedly brings about certainty. But actually, you've said that what the government has done, it's brought about uncertainty into the process. Can you elaborate further on the uncertainty as a result of government action?
Would you have me say that? Thanks, Cat. For us, the uncertainty has come down to the process undertaken and the lack of information that's been shared with councils who are the ultimate implementer of these reforms. So you mentioned before about consultation, for example. It depends on the magnitude of the consultation you're talking about. There was consultation on various elements, but that consultation was done on a high-level principles basis. Details, schedules, design, provisions were not shared, as you pointed out, until the last moment. So that adds an inefficiency as to when it appears in our planning schemes the following day. Council planning departments have to jump and put in extraordinary amount of times. I spent time on the phone talking to planning managers and planning directors, talking about the enormous stress that's put on planning teams when they could actually be issuing planning permits. So that's but one example. So that's but one example, other inefficiencies come down to those tensions around the planning and the building system, that as we've got off on the slide here, if we did have a body to work together a lot better, we could flesh those out a lot quicker.
Thank you. Mr McIntosh, over to you.
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to pick up on the comments that you made at the start around regional and rural councils, and particularly around key worker accommodation and workforce skills. That's something quite close to my heart, growing up in the 90s when we saw, you know, train lines removed and services left, and private services like banks and whatnot followed. And we saw houses, you know, footy clubs go, pubs close, and houses basically being left to rot. Now we've got a very different situation, and a lot of conversations I have with our councils in recent years is, there are different pressures, and those being demand on services. And I just acknowledge those interruptions from Mrs MacArthur, but the two points you raised around skills and workforce, and I'm really proud personally of the investment in regional tapes and the key worker accommodation and the funding that's gone in to address those issues around regional Victoria in the last 12 months. But do you see, and do you hear from your members, that a consequence of not seeing accommodation in, you know, in the conversations we're having now, and the pressures that that may put on regional rural communities and councils, particularly as we acknowledge, if you're a town an hour from the nearest, and there's only so many services, you know, there might be one service provider, and getting the workers for that service provider as opposed to Metropolitan Melbourne, which, you know, you've got this sort of inner connection and more ways you can go for service access. So I suppose it's just that point, if we're unable to house more people in Metropolitan Melbourne, the pressures that will then go onto regional and rural Victoria.
There are significant pressures on rural and regional Victoria, and in fact, we're finding that local governments in some rural parts of Victoria are becoming the last-resort developers, because there are no developers that are willing to invest in those communities. So councils are actually leading incredibly innovative models, where they are parceling land and becoming the development authority to provide that sort of key worker housing around the land that they own. So we would welcome any economic development opportunities that bring more developers into regional communities to develop that kind of housing, so that councils don't have to be that last-resort developer. It's a fundamental issue that every rural council is raising with us at the moment, and it really is where the innovation is occurring in rural Victoria when they're at this point. And we have many good examples where councils are stepping in, but I would suggest that it needs to not just be the council that does that, you know, it needs to be all three levels of government, industry and civil society coming together to meet those housing needs. So, yeah, if we have instances where economic development is not able to proceed because they don't have the workforce, because they don't have homes.
And there's actually an inquiry into the supply of homes in regional Victoria occurring at the moment, MAV did a submission to that, would commend that submission to you, where we talk about exactly those themes, and the housing issues in rural and regional Victoria are often quite unbalanced. So, you know, along the Great Ocean Road, that the housing pressures are around cost, short-term rental accommodation, huge population increases, whereas perhaps inland in the Malley or what have you, where there is that market failure, and councils wanting to grow to provide more opportunities for their communities. So it's quite an unbalanced approach, and that's why we have councils undertaking different innovative models, whether it's key worker housing in the Barwin South West, or Swan Hills City Council doing some excellent work within their planning teams to unlock more housing opportunities up there. So, yeah, we commend those actions.
Yeah, so those councils aren't looking for a big influx of people who can't find housing in the cities to be coming in, you know, tomorrow.
I don't know if they can't find housing in the cities, but we know that there is population growth that is perhaps not able to be fully realised in those regions because there isn't the housing to accommodate them.
Okay, thank you so much. We're going to call it a day there, so thank you very much, and it's so nice to have spent a whole session actually talking about the planning scheme amendments, so that's so refreshing.
Glad we could help you with that.
Thank you for your very thoughtful
Yeah, a tough one.
Pleasure.
Contribution, I think you've done a lot to shape the thinking of the committee. Can I just note that there will be a copy of the transcript provided to you, and we'll be seeking your feedback on that in a very short time. At that point, the committee will now adjourn, we will be back at 12:40 with some panels of councils talking about the issues, so we'll leave it there, thank you so much.